Hey, good evening, everybody. Live from downtown Temecula, it's Tuesday night. I'm gonna call the meeting of the Temecula City Council to order. Let's see, prelude music, Susan Miyamoto, God bless you. You always give us... (applause) If it's not you, it's always some other talented young person that lives here in town or in our valley. Thank you for all you do. I'm gonna ask you to stand for our invocation as Pastor Tim Thompson here.
Yes.
Pastor, come on down. We'll have an invocation by Pastor Tim Thompson. Then I'm gonna ask you to remain standing for our flag salute given by Zach...
Jack.
Jack Swank. Please stand.
Hey, if you all would bow your heads with me. Father in heaven, we come before you tonight as we open up this city council meeting. We ask for your presence to be here, for you to give wisdom to everybody who would make decisions for this great city. Father, having graduated from high school here almost 30 years ago, I've seen this city grow. I've seen your hand of provision upon it, your hand of protection upon it, bringing peace and a great place to raise a family. And so we pray that that would continue tonight. Lord, we pray for everybody who makes decisions tonight. Give them extra wisdom. I pray for all the high school students that are here tonight, Lord. Let them see all that it takes, some behind the scenes of how a city is ran, and let their minds be open to this and let them learn a lot tonight. Father, we pray for all of our first responders here in this great city. Bless them, protect them. Lord, just have your way in the city. We pray all these things tonight in Jesus' name.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor. Young Jack? Pull that microphone down so it reaches you.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. God bless. Please be seated. Madam City Clerk, I sit up here with some distinguished individuals. Can you please give us a roll call?
Absolutely. Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
I'm here.
Councilmember Swank?
I am here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Nigar?
Is in the house. I know that we have a lot of government students, government high school students in the audience. So where are my Pumas tonight? Pumas, are you here? All right. We got a good show up by Pumas. What about Golden Bears? Any Golden Bears in the house?
Yeah, the pastor.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, Wolfpack? No Wolfpack here. Any Wolfpack? Okay, sounds good. So I think, are you Wolfpack?
I'm a teacher.
Okay. You count, you count. Okay. You have to stay here till eight o'clock, and at eight o'clock... (laughing) Hey, ma'am, you raised your hand. I don't expect you to be leaving, okay? No, but you young people, I know you have to stay here for at least an hour, but I have an incentive for you. When you leave, you're gonna be handed a...
Stop it now.
A ticket that says you were here. But I got a gift for you tonight at no extra charge. I have a pocket constitution for you. So when you get your, when you get your ticket that you were here, just ask the city clerk, or she'll find a way, she'll hand them out to you along with the tickets. It's got the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution, a lot of great quotes. All I ask is that if you take one, you read it. It's a marvelous set of documents that I think we should read regularly. So that's at no extra charge.
Are you at a snow cone certificates?
Only for some special occasions, which have yet to happen here. So I keep snow cone, free snow cone passes in here in my briefcase. So impress me. In fact, since you brought it up, if any of you young people want to speak, fill out a pink slip, and if you do, I will, I will treat you to a shave ice. Okay? That's your incentive if you care to. We have one presentation and proclamation. That's a, and Mayor Pro Tem Stewart's gonna help me. That's a presentation of certificate of recognition to Chaparral High School Science Olympiad Team. Who do we have here?
Woo!
Why don't you all come on down? And if you're here with family, after we're done, we're gonna, we're gonna take some pictures after this proclamation. So everybody come on down. So everybody come on down, gather around Mayor Pro Tem Stewart, just kinda gather around, and then later on, we'll take some pictures in front of the dais. Mayor Pro Tem, if you would read the proclamation, and then I'd like to have one of your representatives speak this, this evening, and tell us all about your Olympiad. Mayor Pro Tem?
Okay, so this is for the Chaparral High School Science Olympiad Team. The city of Temecula congratulates Chaparral High School Science Olympiad Team on their outstanding accomplishment and effort competing in Caltech in Southern California State Competition. The team won fourth place in the regional event, which involved 34 high school, high performing schools competing throughout the inland empire. Chaparral High School earned a total of 31 medals by scoring in the top six across 23 science and engineering events. At the state event, the team scored in the top three, or top 10 in three engineering events. Right Stuff, a rubber band powered airplane they created that remained in flight for over two minutes. Boom Lever, Boomaliver, a structure built to hold 1,000 times its weight. And Mission Impossible, a Rube Goldberg machine made to perform specific tasks of energy transfer. Several businesses in our community contributed sponsorship and volunteers, which provided the students with experience working alongside engineers from Abbott, Optiform, Infineum Technologies, and Nordson's, Nordson. We are proud of the Chaparral High School Olympiad Teams, dedicated and talent, and we wish them continued success in their future endeavors.
Woo! Woo! (applause)
Mr. Andrews, Hiram, would you like to say a few words? Tell us about your team?
Sure. Well, I just, I just feel like I'm really a blessed teacher, being able to coach this, this team. And we've had a great year. This is one of our best so far. And just a really dedicated group of students here, and really self-driven, really self-motivated in a lot of these engineering events that we, that you saw on the screen here and that you heard about. This is stuff that they did, and they really just put in the hours at their home, and it's because they're passionate. And it's, it's, to me, it's, it's a really special thing, because when I'm teaching, I teach chemistry and AP chemistry, and in the classroom, I can only get so far with, you know, classroom assignments. But them studying on their own and doing their own engineering events and really getting hands-on experience with what it's all about was really special, and it was, it was nice to be, to work in tandem with communities in our, our city as well, Optiforms, and Infineon, and Nordson, and Abbott. And they volunteered a lot of time to help us out. We worked with some engineers that really helped the kids out a lot, too, and they learned a ton. So that was really special.
How awesome. Congratulations, and I'm glad that we were able to present you with the certificate. So let's, let's do this. I think it's picture time. Let's have all of you just come over here, line up in front of the dais, and face that way. Moms, dads, anybody here with family, this is a chance for your picture. How about you and I go down with them?
I can't see over my screen. Yeah. Thank you.
Look at this, lots of cool pictures. I'll take this side, Stuart.
Got it. I guess you better. No. As in like two rows.
Two rows, maybe. Yeah. Come on, guys. It's supposed to be smart. There's the airplane. Where's that guy? Come on.
Tall people in the back.
Take front row, go kinda down. Go, Pumas.
Take your time. So this is a, this is a good occasion. Everybody gets a shave ice, and if you guys want, you can have a pocket constitution. I don't want you guys leaving without it. So here you go. And I think we wanna take one more picture, so. You're very welcome, very welcome. There you go. Yeah, there you go. Thanks. Great job, you guys. Here you go. Here. There you go. Looks like I'm just gonna have enough. Mr. Mayor, pretend you don't get one. All right. And let's finish taking photos. Thank you. And if you want one of those constitutions, right there in that box, just go ahead and grab one.
They're gonna explain the Rube Goldberg machine.
Okay.
I'm very interested. I'm... I'll give you a second.
Hiram, you wanna explain the Rube Goldberg?
Yes.
Okay, go for it, go for it.
Okay. So me and Ethan are the creators of the machine called Mission Possible. The event is basically where you start off where you drop a ping pong ball, and it ends with a nine volt battery racing. And in between that is a set of actions that you're allowed to do, and the more than that you do, the better your points. And you're trying to have this machine not fail. And it gets to the point where it becomes really complicated, because you're doing so many things in here within a limited amount of space, within a limited amount of time. You guys ever play the board game Mousetrap?
Yes. I was thinking of that when you said that. Exactly.
Do they still make that? Can you buy that?
Yeah, yeah, I think you can.
Yeah? That's pretty cool.
On your Christmas list, Mr. Mayor.
Congratulations, you guys. Again, we're very proud of you, and thanks for coming down tonight.
(applause) Are you the governor? They're the ambassador.
Madam City Clerk, we come to that point in our meeting for public comments. Do we have any public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments tonight.
Okay, do we have a video?
I believe we do have a video.
All right, roll the video.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on any item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing public comments and the consent calendar. Once a speaker is called to speak, please come forward and state your name for the record. For all public hearing or council business items on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. Each speaker is limited to five minutes.
That was great. Councilmember Edwards pointed out that the dog's tongue was sticking out the whole time. So, thank you, Councilmember Edwards. Okay, Madam Clerk, please call the first speaker.
The first speaker is Jennifer Sharp, to be followed by Cindy Bustos.
Ms. Sharp, good evening to you.
Sharp.
Or Sharf.
Sharp, that's okay. Good evening, council members. My name is Jenny Sharp, and I'm here to speak, to ask you to join hundreds of cities across America and this community as we rally to wear orange for gun safety by lighting up City Hall Orange for the weekend of June 7th through the 9th. First of all, I want to emphatically state that this is not about the Second Amendment or taking away guns. We here are all patriotic Americans who cherish our Constitution and our Bill of Rights. This is about being safe with those guns that the Second Amendment gives us the right to bear. The issue of gun safety is near and dear to my heart, because I am a mom, I am a teacher, and I am a gun owner. As a mom, there is nothing more important to me than the safety of my children. Not their happiness, not their education, not their social status, simply their safety. Unfortunately, in today's world, I have to worry about their safety, not just in parks or playgrounds, but particularly on school grounds. Let me first say that I love their schools, and I know that the faculty and staff would do all that they could to keep my kids safe if the unthinkable were to occur. But as a mom, it's my job to do all I can to keep them safe, and that means being involved in campaigns such as Wear Orange for Gun Safety, in order to raise awareness around this issue, and do all that I can to keep guns out of the hands of the wrong people, those with nefarious ideologies and harmful plans, those who would walk into Sandy Hook Elementary School, or Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, or Columbine High School, or Umpqua City College, or Santa Fe High School, or, or, or. I've seen the, the effects these school shootings and the commensurate drills have, excuse me, drills that follow have, had on my own children. My middle schooler has woken up shaking and terrified from nightmares that she's had about her school being shot up. My youngest is afraid that my advocacy will lead to me being harmed. It is in memorial of these past tragedies and in prevention of future tragedies that we ask you to join us by lighting City Hall Orange. Also, as a Temecula teacher, I have seen my students' lives forever changed and even cut short by gun violence. Although Temecula does have heart, and it is one of the safest cities in America, it is here, not in LA where I taught for six years, that my classroom has been critically and irrevocably marred by gun violence. In 2007, my first year teaching here, five people died at the end of a barrel. One of those people was my student, 15-year-old Nikita. Nikita, who loved motocross and the mall, and the beach, and bandanas, and wanted to be a business owner, was murdered as she lay on the couch with her best friend and twin sister, Nerissa. Those girls will never reach their dreams, because the wrong person was able to get a hold of a gun at the wrong time. And just a couple of years ago, our community was once again rocked by gun violence, when a teenager playing with a gun and ammo he should not have had access to shot and killed another teenager.
Ms. Sharp?
Yes.
I'm glad you're here to speak. However, your time is up.
It said we had five minutes.
Three minutes.
Oh, the video said five, just so you know.
Yeah, it's three minutes, and I bet your, your message is well received. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Cindy Bustos, to be followed by Mary Ann Margosian.
Ms. Bustos, good evening to you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. My name is Cindy Bustos, longtime resident here in Temecula. I am a wife, a mother, and a grandmother. I am the founder of our local chapter of Moms Demand Action for Gun Sense in America. We are nonpartisan, and are also the largest grassroots organization in the country. My husband and I are gun owners, and we want to advocate for safe gun laws. When I was growing up, we had something called duck and cover, which was the government's response to a possible nuclear, nuclear strike. We now have drills preparing children to protect themselves from a mass murderer who might well be sitting next to them in their own classroom. Moms Demand Action wants to change this and make these drills eventually obsolete. Our primary purpose is to educate the public on gun safety and lobby for safer gun laws in our country. We support the Second Amendment and are not proposing to take away anyone's guns unless they are either a threat to themselves or to others. Thousands of Americans and local community partners will join together at events all across the country to recognize the Fifth National Gun Violence Awareness Day on Friday, June 7th. Together, we will recognize individuals and communities impacted by gun violence, elevate stories and successes in working to reduce gun violence in our country, and share our dedication and commitment to each other and take on the fights ahead. The color orange is the color that Hadia Pendleton's friends wore in her honor after she was shot and killed in Chicago at the age of 15, just one week after performing at President Obama's second inaugural parade in 2013. The color orange now honors the 100 lives cut short and the hundreds more wounded by gun violence every day. Last year, orange lights illuminated the sky from one World Trade Center's 408-foot spire, which Governor Andrew Cuomo ordered to be lit orange in honor of gun violence survivors in our country. So did LA City Hall, Museum of Man in San Diego, Coit Tower, and San Francisco City Hall. And hundreds of cities across the nation are now participating in our Wear Orange event. We would like to ask the city of Temecula to light up City Hall for this event. The city of Temecula is such a beautiful, dynamic city, and by showing our support for the most important issue we face in this nation, we would be among the most forward-thinking cities in our county, state, and nation. I ask that you consider this action to protect your own children and grandchildren, so that they may live in a country that prioritizes children's lives through gun safety. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Bustos. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Mary Ann Margosian, to be followed by our last speaker, Mark Caton.
Ms. Margosian, good evening to you.
Good evening. I come with a different perspective. I stand with my fellow activists back here. I am a retired military officer, spent 24 years in the Navy, and in that time, I watched an evolution in our country from what was your Second Amendment right to carry a gun, and I do own guns, to an arc that has impacted us beyond belief at this point. I believe in gun safety, not canceling the Second Amendment, not putting your guns in a warehouse, not collecting them, but to value human life. Our children are going to school worried that the next depressed, angry, bullied child will come up to them with a weapon, and their lives will end, and we've seen too much of it. This city is one of the safest, and as the gentleman who spoke earlier, the Reverend, the minister, we are known as a safe city, but what we are doing without acknowledging and with putting the burden down on the schools, the teachers, and the students is wrong. As adults and leaders, of which all of you are, just by where you sit, you can have an impact. You can say, I believe that somebody with dementia shouldn't have guns in the house where he might shoot his spouse coming back in from grocery shopping because he doesn't recognize her. I work with wounded warriors. I'm a massage therapist. And I also work with domestic violence victims. And just this morning, massaged a person, and we try and get domestic violence victims to understand that not all touch is bad, and to get them in a comfortable zone where touches not to be feared. And the woman today that I was massaging was pistol-whipped, and her mother was shot less than four months ago, because her PTSD marine, ex-marine, or former marine, he's out of the military now, no one called and said, under red flag laws, to remove the guns from the house. They didn't even realize they could do that. And that's why the lighting up City Hall Orange, people are gonna say, what's that mean? What is that all about? And I think we have an obligation to make the awareness come to fruition, and to plant the seed that we can be safer if we acknowledge that there is a problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Margosian. Next speaker, please.
The last speaker is Mark Caton.
Mr. Caton, always a pleasure, sir.
Not sure if it's big enough for them to focus in on, but hopefully. See if they do.
Jonathan, can you put that on the big screen and zoom in?
Too small.
Is that the best?
Sorry, guys. All right. Well, my name is Mark Caton. I'm with the Temecula Education Foundation, and one of the things that we do support is Science Olympiad, so just, just an FYI for you. But many of the things that the schools have missed out on, especially arts, science, music, things that have been cut back due to many budget cuts, we're trying to replace. In fact, I came from the school board meeting just a few minutes ago, where we passed out a check for $18,500, which was this year's award for the grant recipients. And so, so far, we've given $185,000 back to the school district in support of those areas. So the main reason I'm here tonight is to talk about Taste of Temecula Valley. Taste of Temecula Valley is a fun event where we have entertainment, we have music, and we have a lot of food, great food, and we do have wine, beer, and spirits available also, but entertainment, it's all day long on Saturday, the 27th, and Friday night from 6:00 to 10:00. So it's a very wonderful event, and it goes to, as you can see, it's for the kids. That's all it is. It's all it's about. And it's our ninth year, and we're excited for the support that the city has given us, which is tremendous, because we get to hold it right out front on your front porch, and we appreciate that. That's an amazing location. Everybody loves the location, and it's where everybody comes together. This town comes together, people are meeting their, people they know, making new friends, and it's a fun event. So we'd love to see you all there, and thank you so much for the opportunity.
Mark, you, you do this every year. For how many years now have you been doing?
This is our ninth year.
Your ninth year. How many volunteers does it take to put this event together?
We're running a little short on volunteers, so anybody that wants to volunteer can go to our website, but normally, we do have 200 volunteers.
So that's what it takes to put, to put on this event?
Definitely.
Wow.
200 volunteers.
Okay, good. And you'll be, let's see, the event is run again?
Friday, the 26th of this month, and April 27th.
Okay, so it looks like we'll have another council meeting before then, and we'll continue to promote it, but...
I appreciate it.
Definitely wanna get your volunteers out there and get everybody in the community. Thanks for all you do.
Thanks so much for the opportunity.
Take care. Madam City Clerk, I think that's it on public speaking? All right. Now's the time in our meeting for city council reports. Mr. Stewart?
It's not necessarily a report. I, I just wanna see if we can do that, light up the City Hall Orange. I mean, I'd like to recommend that we actually do that. Is that something I can do?
What, what I'd like, if you can do, is get together with the city manager after meeting and have that discussion, and he'll discuss the logistics with you, and the criteria, and all of those things.
Great.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, or next commenter? Nothing there, Zach?
No, thanks.
Okay, very good. We'll move on over to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the city council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. So if we were to go through these young people individually, we'd be here all night, but because they're routine, we'll be able to read them and get one vote and dispense with them. Number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of March 26, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. That's the checks that the city writes. Four is approve the placement of the Carl Lindemann's Memorial Bridge sign on Overland Drive. I'm going to pull that one. Five, approve funding for Michelle's Place to enable the expansion of the Cancer Resource Center at the request of subcommittee members Mayor Nigar and Councilmember Edwards. Matt Mayor Nigar, he's a good guy. Number six, approve the three-year agreement with Thompson Reuters for annual subscription to the Clear for Law Enforcement Plus online database for the Temecula Police Department. Seven, approve a list of projects to be funded by Senate Bill 1, SB 1, for fiscal year 2019 and 2020. Eight, accept Skyview Park into the city maintained park system located southwesterly of the intersection of Marietta Hot Springs Road and Oropah Valley Road. Nine, approve specifications and authorize solicitation of construction bids for pavement rehabilitation program. Rancho Vista Road, Paseo Galleta to Butterfield Stage Road, that's Public Works Project 19-01. Ten, adopt a resolution and authorize the city manager to approve and execute documents related to the exchange agreement between the city of Temecula and TriPoint Homes, Inc. Lot 87 easement and drainage easement. Eleven, award a construction contract to EBS General Engineering, Inc. for citywide concrete repairs for fiscal years 2017 and 18. PW 18-07, I have a quick question on that, I'll come back to. Adopt a resolution determining that the emergency repairs, that's number 12, adopt a resolution determining to, that the emergency repairs authorized by Resolution 2019-11 pursuant to Public Contract Code Section 22050 have been completed, and there is no longer a need for the emergency authorization. is no longer a need for the emergency authorization. So, before I take a motion, I just have a quick question on number 11. Are those years correct, fiscal year 2017-18, or is that just a typo?
That's actually correct. We have named those projects after the year when they were initially budgeted. So, this project was initially budgeted in the 17-18 fiscal year, so that's why it's named that way.
Okay, real good. Wanted to make sure that we didn't have a mistake and have to bring it back. So, I'll take a motion.
Move approval of everything except number four.
Exactly. So, moved by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Pro-Tim Stewart. Please cast your votes. And, where is it? Oh, that passes 5-0. Thank you. And let's go to the item we pulled, Agenda Item Number Four. Can we have the briefest of staff reports?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. This item is, Overland Bridge is familiar to everyone, and former mayor and council member Carl Lindeman has his fingerprints all over the city of Temecula, was on the first city council, and I believe his family is here this evening. This item is out of respect for him and his legacy in terms of what he contributed to the construction, the vision, the implementation of Overland Bridge. And if you walk Overland Bridge, there is a plaque that was dedicated on the northeast side of the bridge, probably nearly a decade ago, but it's inconspicuous. It really doesn't do it justice. And so, tonight's item is to make Carl's name and the naming of that bridge from the east and from the west more honoring and more respectful for his time and energy that he put towards the dedication of Overland Bridge. With that, happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Questions right now? Any questions?
Only comments.
Okay, thank you very much. So, are there any requests to speak?
Mr. Mayor, I believe there is, Ray Lindeman is in the audience and may want to...
Okay, we'll get to that in a second, because we're, I kind of have this structure in my mind, but no formal requests to speak. Okay. Can Carl's family come up to the podium, all of you? And if you could just briefly, just tell us your name and your relation to Carl, just one by one, if you don't mind.
Yolanda Lindeman, his daughter.
Cheryl Mount, his granddaughter.
Evan Pierce, grandson.
Anthony Zappia, his grandson.
John Pierce, son-in-law.
Tricia Pierce, his daughter.
Jake Lindeman's grandson.
Karen Dixon, Ray Lindeman's girlfriend.
And Ray Lindeman's.
Excellent.
Thank you all.
You're very welcome. And Ray, we're gonna hear from you in a moment, okay, but I want you to just wait for a second, and I want to defer to my colleagues first. Mary Ann, I think that you had some comments you'd like to make. Why don't you go ahead?
I do, just for those who weren't born yet, or didn't know of, or, you know, still don't know of Carl Lindeman's. He was a character. That describes him perfectly, and he was one of my favorite people, and it was that first city council, and Tom and I used to come to all the meetings, or we would watch on television, even when the first meetings were down at the Community Recreation Center. And Carl was never at a loss for words. He was hilariously funny. At times, he was very, very serious. He was a successful businessman, an accountant. He grew up in Holland and was a naturalized citizen of the United States, very proud to serve, and he loved this city. And he, those council meetings were very raucous at times. You could tell the council members all respected and loved one another, but none of them was afraid to state his or her opinion, and there were many opinions on that first council. And I still remember Carl saying, "We didn't know what we were doing when we started this city." You know, nobody had ever started a city before, any of the people who served. They all served on different committees, but, and look how far we've come since then. It's the decisions that that initial council made under the leadership of the first council members and Carl as mayor, and he used to say, "I am the mayor and you are not," when he wanted his way. It was a wonderful time, and because of the foundation that they placed at our feet, Temecula has been able to grow and become the city that we all love today. And so, he was very firm on getting that bridge finished before the Promenade Mall opened. It was key to traffic, and our traffic was horrendous at the time because the county had not made provisions for roads in Temecula. We didn't even go all the way through, so it was wonderful, and this is, I think, the least we can do to honor him and family. I'm so glad you can all be here.
Thank you. Matt?
Well, first, I wanted to, again, thank you and your band for being at the State of the City last year and providing just absolutely amazing rendition of our National Anthem. That was incredible, but also for bringing this to our attention, and, you know, and you and I talked about this, and recognizing, I think, that the bridge needed that additional, I think, recognition for your father's service, and I'm glad we're able to, you know, find something that I think was respectful and, you know, recognizes the deep dedication he had to this community and also this service. And so, glad you all could be here today and glad that we're able to bring this forward tonight.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you. And my comments, in no particular word, because I remember your dad and your grandpa just very fondly. He served with distinction until 1999. I remember in early 99, knowing he declared he wasn't running anymore. I remember sitting in his living room and him mentoring me, okay, helping me prepare to run for city council, and that's the type of man that he was. He gave a speech once that I'll never forget, and that was on Memorial Day, and he talked about the American military coming in and freeing, I believe, his hometown was, help me out, his hometown was...
I don't remember.
Netherlands?
Amsterdam.
Amsterdam, there you go. And it was so compelling that people were in tears and you can hear a pin drop. I've never forgotten that speech. Mary Ann, you covered a lot of things, but I'll tell you, in the early days of the city, back with the first city council, it was a grand and marvelous time, and it's very hard to describe. Many people in this room might not have even been born then, but it was a time of freewheeling and a time of love for the city, and, you know, our theme this year is love Temecula. I need everybody to understand that's exactly where it started. It started then and there, and they continued to pass the torch to where we are today. So, Lord, help us that we can continue to carry on that tradition. And then, lastly, when we dedicated the first plaque, and I agree, Councilmember Ron, thank you for bringing this back, it wasn't enough of a tribute, but I do remember, and I wonder if you still have it, I did bring a full-size cutout of Gandalf from Lord of the Rings.
Yes.
And if you want to really, I mean, because, just with a little shorter beard, that's exactly what Carl Lindeman's looked like.
I always thought he looked like Geppetto.
Yeah. So, you know, every meeting was a delight.
It was so fun.
Because you never knew what was going to come out of his mouth. And there were even times when he would whisper, back then, Mayor Birdsall, Birdsall Park, it's named after her, he would whisper things in her ear that were very naughty, okay?
And she'd do this?
Yeah, and it would just throw her off, and she would be blushing. I mean, you just, I don't know what she said, what he said.
And she would laugh.
And she would laugh, and that was just the type of man Carl Lindeman was. Carl passed away when, Ray?
2012.
2012. Why don't you come forward and tell us a little bit about your dad?
Well, I mean, everybody knows about him. He was a big jokester, big heart, great father, great-grandfather. You know, he really cared about this city tremendously. He cared about each and every one of you, Mary Ann and Mike and some of the new guys, you know, James I met. Matt, great idea for this alternative solution. I really appreciate it. Super nervous. I can't even believe that this is happening finally, so, thank you. That's all I really...
All right. Okay, so, let's do this.
I'm emotional right now.
You should be, because your dad was quite the man, and it's quite our honor. So, it's our, it's the pleasure of the city council to present the sign that's going up on Overland Bridge.
Finally.
Okay?
Finally.
In memory of Carl Lindeman.
Thank you, guys.
Can I have my council colleagues stand up and hold this sign? And then, we're gonna take the sign down, and you're gonna take some pictures.
That's awesome.
With it. And why don't you guys get over there, and I don't know where I fit in. Yeah, maybe we can go higher.
Yeah, there you go.
Okay, there we go.
Perfect.
Okay?
Am I in front of you, Matt?
I'd take a picture, but I'd be all...
Yeah. Shawna, you got that, or?
I got that, anything you can come with.
Yeah, now, we're coming down, and I think the whole council should take a photo with your head.
Absolutely, please do.
Let's all go down.
You know what he'd say if you were here? It's about time.
Yeah, you're right.
Let's do it next to the dais, right here.
Can we do it right?
Yeah, right, we'll go across the dais.
Okay.
Okay. Ray, why don't, does your family want to hold this?
Absolutely.
Okay. Why don't you, Lindeman's family come down, you guys take the, I'm gonna go around there next to Zach. We'll be down there. Can you get us all in there?
Yeah. Would we be able to go right here as well?
If you'd like, certainly. Let's do it. Let's move it on. Get the podium out of the way. You need some help, or?
Absolutely.
If the family could line up here, same photo, just in front of the dais. Yeah.
Where's Ray?
Get you in there.
Get in there with it.
In the middle, between my sisters. There you go.
We are gonna hang this for you.
Missed two of them.
Thank you so much. Do you want it back?
What was that? Oh, yeah. You know what? Don't take the sign with you. We need to install it, okay? Give the sign back, and then, there's a little, there's a little formality. We haven't voted yet, okay?
Right.
If we don't get three votes, we gotta scrub this whole thing.
Let's see the vote.
Can I have a motion, please?
Move approval.
All right, second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That passes. I'm sorry. You know what? Register your votes, will you? Just, because I went to a voice vote. City Clerk's gonna get mad at me. There we go. It's 5-0. Gently mad, okay? I've never seen you angry, Madam City Clerk, except at Sacramento, but it's another show. Okay, but, all righty. Let's move on here. Okay, that was the consent calendar. All right, I'm gonna, the city council wears many hats, and we, because we wear many hats, we have different meetings. So, right now, I'm gonna recess the council meeting, and I'm gonna turn the gavel over to the Temecula Community Service District and President, Mayor Pro-Tim, Jim Stewart.
Okay, I'm gonna call to order the Community Service District meeting. Madam Clerk, please be advised, we're all here. Are there any public comments? Okay, so, we have one agenda item is to approve the action minutes of March 26, 2019.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Please vote. All right. Matt passes 5-0. So, Director's Report.
Mr. President, I think we have a slide. Hashtag this park is hopping. So, join us at Kent Ingrid Memorial Park for the Teen Night Light Egg Hunt this Friday, April 12, from 8:00 to 9:30 p.m. Over 350 prizes, including gift cards, boogie boards, and TVs are sure to make for an egg sighting.
Oh.
I know, Teen Temecula Egg Hunt.
Boo.
I know, I know, yes. The Broadway in the Park series returns on Sunday, April 14, at 3:00 p.m. at the Harvest and Amphitheater. This free event for the community will once again feature an incredible lineup of professional performers from the Bar and Stage Company singing songs from current musical offerings on Broadway. And finally, just a reminder that our annual Easter egg hunts for inclusive ages 1 to 12 years old will be Saturday, April 20, at 10:00 a.m. sharp at Temecula Hills Harvesting Community and Birdsall Parks. For additional information, visit our website at temeculascia.gov/tcst, and since the jokes, that concludes my talk.
And I will say, I saw the prizes that's gonna be at this, so anybody 13 to 18, there's some good stuff there, so you might want to come. It sounds like it's a lot of fun, too, being that it's at night and you can't really see the eggs, and it'll be, it'll be pretty cool. General Manners, oh, no. Yeah, General Manners Report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President?
Board of Directors, yes?
Quick one. Mr. Hawkins, when's the special games? Is that coming up? Do you have that date, or did I catch you by surprise? I think it's coming up this month, isn't it?
I have.
Yeah.
We're...
Sorry, sorry, Kevin, I caught you off.
I think it's 27, the 7th, Friday.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know what we can do? We'll get the date, and I'll report out at the city manager's report on the back end of the meeting.
Sounds good. How about that?
Yeah.
Perfect. Yeah, I just want to make sure we get the, I think it's coming up Saturday, the 24th, I think it is.
It's soon, yeah.
Something like that. So, I just want to make sure we get the word out. Thanks.
Got it.
That's my only comment. Thanks.
Any other reports? Okay. We will adjourn this meeting until April 23.
Thank you. I'm gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. This is the business section, business portion of our meeting. Item 14 is introduce an ordinance amending portions of the Temecula Municipal Code to add definitions and make minor clarifications and typographical corrections. Mr. Peters, good afternoon, or good evening to you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. This is the Temecula Municipal Code update. So, the Temecula Municipal Code was adopted in 1990, and since the adoption, the city council has added new chapters and has periodically made amendments to various code sections to improve its clarity. So, really, when you have a development code, it just needs annual or regular maintenance. The proposed ordinance includes amendments to Titles 1, 8, 10, 15, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. So, there are three types of code amendments. The first are minor policy amendments, minor clarifications, and then typographical corrections. So, those are included in the staff report. I'm not gonna go through all of the corrections, just the more substantive policy amendments and clarifications. So, the First Amendment is a, with regard to prohibition of smoking in public places, places of employment, and other areas. The amendment clarifies that smoking is not permitted on public or private school property, and that the prohibition extends to possession of tobacco, nicotine, vapes, and smoking paraphernalia. And that amendment was requested by the police department and the school district. The next amendment is parking for certain purposes is prohibited, and it's a proposed amendment. It removes the prohibition of parking a vehicle on the street for, with a for-sale sign. Our city attorney has advised that prohibiting a for-sale sign on a vehicle in the public right-of-way is an infringement upon a person's first right-of-way is an infringement upon a person's First Amendment right. Next amendment is a modification to an approved development plan. Currently, there are no provisions for the expiration of an approved modification to a vested or already constructed or under construction development plan. Staff proposes to amend that section to include provisions for the expiration of and an extension of time for an approved modification to a vested development plan. A modification to a vested development plan expires three years after the date of approval and allows for five one-year extensions of time. That's consistent with an approved development plan. Additional amendments, residential districts, special use standards and regulations, accessory structures and uses, adds a footnote to the table clarifying that only one detached guest house is permitted per lot, currently that's not specified in the code. Also, in residential districts, special use standards and regulations with regard to fences, hedges, and walls specifies that chain link fencing is prohibited within the front yard setback of residential zones. And this is to maintain aesthetics within the residential neighborhoods. As, with regard to residential performance standards, additions and remodeling and new construction of accessory structures, we're changing the word "should" with "shall" for how an accessory structure is designed to ensure architectural compatibility and consistency with the main structure and to avoid the appearance that an accessory structure is simply tacked on. An amendment to the off-street parking and loading, specifically the parking spaces required, clarifying that guest parking requirements for multifamily residential projects of 13 or more units, a minimum of four guest spaces is required for all multifamily residential with 13 or more units, plus one guest space for every six units thereafter. There was some confusing language in the development code, and we're clarifying that requirement. We also identified a typo in the draft ordinance regarding parking required for one-bedroom units. The appropriate required spaces is one covered and then a half space uncovered for each one-bedroom unit when you're doing the calculation. This typo will be corrected prior to the second reading. As far as definition of terms, we're deleting the definition of a caretaker's residence, it's the same as an accessory dwelling unit, so we're consolidating. We're amending the definition of a guest house, and we're distinguishing between an accessory dwelling unit, in that a guest house is intended for visitors of the primary residence and shall not contain provisions for the preparation of food. And then we're clarifying the definition of a large family daycare home. This makes the definition consistent with the California Health and Safety Code. So, with that, staff's recommendation, the planning commission reviewed Title 17 amendments on March 20, 2019, and adopted a resolution recommending city council adoption by ordinance. There are other titles, but the planning commission's purview is for Title 17 amendments only. The proposed ordinance amendments are exempt from SEQA, and staff recommends adoption of the ordinance to amend titles 1, 8, 10, 15, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Mary Ann?
Would we say that none of these changes or corrections really is outside the original intent of the ordinance?
That's correct.
They all remain inside the intent of the ordinance, and they're all consistent with the general plan?
That's correct.
Okay.
Mr. Stewart?
So, the guest house thing, I'm kind of slightly confused on that. So, is, are guest houses allowed as long as they don't have a kitchen, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
And that's current right now? I mean, that's what we have in our...
So, right now, we have a definition for an accessory dwelling unit, so if you have a single-family home, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. That dwelling unit, the max size is 1,200 square feet, and that can have kitchen cooking facilities.
Oh, that can?
That can.
Oh, I see.
A guest house, we're defining that so it wouldn't have the cooking facilities.
So, are you saying you can actually have a guest house and an accessory dwelling?
You could, depending on the zone.
Wow, okay.
Any other questions? Sounds good. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments?
We do not.
Okay. Any discussion by the council?
Nope.
Or I will entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance.
She moved it, I'll second.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, would you introduce the ordinance?
Yes. Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is an ordinance of the city council of the city of Temecula amending titles 1, 8, 10, 15, 16, and 17 of the Temecula Municipal Code to add definitions, make minor policy clarifications, and make minor typographical edits, and finding that this ordinance is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act SEQA pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15061B3.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, please register your votes.
Madam City Clerk, I was, I made the motion.
And that passes five zero. Thank you very much, Matt. I presume you're sticking around for 15?
Yeah.
Typically, you know, all right, thank, got it. Item 15, adopt an urgency ordinance amending the Temecula Municipal Code to add a new section pertaining to small wireless facilities within the public right-of-way, and a resolution establishing a design policy for small wireless facilities. Mr. Peters?
Thank you. Yes, back-to-back tonight. So, this is an urgency ordinance and design policy resolution for small wireless facilities. Some background on this urgency ordinance, the new FCC order streamlines the provision of 5G wireless services and restricts local government regulation. The latest technology and laws are changing rapidly, and the city's existing ordinance, Chapter 1740, dealing with telecommunications, was written to address macro or tower cell sites on private property. And this next slide just shows a graphic of the difference between a macro cell site versus a small wireless facility. On the left, you can see the towers, they can be monopoles, monopines, but essentially, those are those macro sites on private property. And the urgency ordinance is to address the small cells within the public right-of-way. So, the urgency ordinance proposes to amend Chapter 1740, telecommunications facility and antenna ordinance, by adding a new section, 17.40.260. And what it does is it defines small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way consistent with the FCC definition, requires a standard encroachment permit, establishes application and right-of-way access fees, and specifies that small wireless facilities shall comply with design requirements to avoid clutter in the public right-of-way. So, that's the urgency ordinance. The design policy is intended to comply with the FCC ruling and establish reasonable and objective design standards. So, there are different components to the design policy, but in a nutshell, I guess, what it's meant to say is that small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way shall be the least intrusive possible with regard to appearance, size, and location, and shall be designed to match existing streetlight poles. And here's a graphic example of what we're intending with the design policy. Here's an existing Southern California Edison Street standard, and I worked on the Crown Castle DAS node project back in 2010 and 11, and we worked with the, with Crown Castle at that time to design a DAS node that mimics a streetlight. We're also working with Verizon on a master license agreement, and there are some sample graphics that show they can do that with small cells as well. So, that's the intent of this design policy. In terms of next steps, we must extend the urgency ordinance within 45 days, or it expires. And our next step would then be to hire a telecommunications consultant to update Chapter 1740 in compliance with state and federal laws. We estimate that would take about six to nine months. We need to evaluate our existing ordinance, draft a new one, run it through different subcommittees, take it to a planning commission, and then get it to a city council. With that, staff's recommendation, the proposed urgency ordinance amendment is exempt from SEQA. Staff recommends adoption of the urgency ordinance, and staff also recommends adoption of a resolution establishing a design policy for small wireless facilities in the public right-of-way.
Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Are there any questions regarding this item of staff? Mary Ann?
So, everyone was so upset just a few months ago when we lost our ability to police, if you will, that, so that only involved the large towers? I thought it involved these exact ones, where we lost control over design, size, placement.
Specifically with the small cells in the public right-of-way, the new FCC ruling, we need to pass this urgency ordinance to deal with the aesthetics, yeah.
Okay.
If we don't, we just don't have that ability.
That's good. I was under the impression that we really didn't have a choice, so this is much better.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Any other questions right now? Very good. Madam City Clerk, do we have any public comments? Okay, so first, we'll entertain a motion to introduce the ordinance.
Well, I'll second.
Okay, so, Mr. City Attorney, you have your motion and your second, please introduce the ordinance.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, this is an urgency ordinance amending Chapter 17.40 of the Temecula Development Code, telecommunications facility and antenna ordinance to add a new section, 17.40.260, small cell wireless facilities in the public right-of-way, enacted pursuant to government code sections 36934, 36937, and 65858, declaring the urgency thereof, and making a determination of exemption under the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney, please register your votes.
One more, Mary Ann?
And that passes five zero. We do need a, to adopt item two, resolution next in line, do I have a motion?
Second.
That was Mary Ann and Matt Ron, please register your votes. And, let's see, that passes five zero. All right, we're going to move on to the next item. You young folks, you're welcome to stay, but you're also free to go, okay, if you want. We're almost done, so you're welcome to stay if you desire, but your certificates are out in the hallway. But you are welcome to stay. Come back! Come back!
Getting them back now. Yes, as a matter of fact. Just getting good.
We'll wait, we'll wait till they just clear the room real quick.
It's like the dog here in the kennel.
All right.
Yeah.
While we're at it, commission reports. Mr. Sullivan of the Traffic Safety Commission.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. At our last traffic safety commission, we reviewed the Delray Loop in response to neighbor concerns regarding speeds on that area. The commission made recommendations on some traffic calming provisions, as well as continued monitoring, so that it could be fine tuned. In addition, the intersection of Delray and Calle Buena Suerta, there's two hills there, one coming down on Delray, one coming up on Calle Buena Suerta, the line of sight's poor, and that's an area of high-speed issues, so we've recommended a three-way stop sign there. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Watts from the Planning Commission.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Our last meeting last week, we approved two conditional use permits relating to a couple of restaurants in town and their desire to expand their ABC licenses. That's my report.
Thank you. To the gentleman impersonating Mr. Willis?
Yes, sir. So, to go back, special games is May 4.
Thank you.
And that's just because Easter is late this year. That'll be at Great Oak High School, and April 27, we have Harbor Day at the Temecula Duck Pond. That is my report.
Thank you so much. How about a public safety report?
Good evening. The Temecula Fire Station's responded to 690 calls for service in the month of March. This month's safety message is snake safety. As the weather gets warmer, the snakes are out, and everybody wants to go out and hike, so on our website, we've put several snake safety tips. Some of the things to think about is never go barefoot or wear sandals when walking through wild areas, always wear hiking boots, never grab sticks or branches while swimming in lakes or rivers, rattlesnakes can swim, do not handle a freshly killed snake, it can still inject venom. I'm going to add careful walking through the puppies, the snakes are out there as well. And also, as the warm weather gets hotter and drier, and everybody wants to go outside, make sure that we're hydrating, because we're already increasing our rescues in the last week, so, end of report.
Thank you, chief. Mr. City Manager, what do you have for us this evening?
Nothing further tonight, we're good.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and members of the council, we had a close session tonight on the case of County of Santa Cruz versus the Bureau of Cannabis Control. This is the state agency that passed the regulation prohibiting deliveries of cannabis in the city, and the council authorized the city to join that at your March 12 meeting. And tonight, we brought you an update because the case has been filed, and it's being litigated in Fresno Superior Court, but no other action was taken tonight.
Thank you very much. Before we adjourn this meeting, I believe Councilmember Matt Ron has a comment.
I know, just wanted a quick, as much as I've enjoyed spending my evening with you all, just wanted to make a quick shout-out to my wife. We are celebrating our eighth anniversary this evening.
Oh, happy anniversary!
So, I will see you all next time.
Congratulations, and, you know what, you got just a wonderful bride in Kelsey, and she certainly picked a winner in you. Please.
Say it without the surname.
Stop!
You said winner.
Stop!
I tried, I really tried. Well, we can either keep Dr. Ron here a little while longer, or we can get a motion to adjourn this baby.
Move a German.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we stand adjourned.